Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It is Monday, November 7, 2016. It's now 8:30. First order of business and a pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask Selectmen Vallestracei to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, call. Before we proceed, I'd like to introduce to the public, and the Board has already met, our new Finance Director, Mary Jane Malavessi. Mary Jane, welcome.
Thank you.
And we're excited to have you here. Item two, public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes for October 17, 2016, which was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
None, thank you. Item four, Guilford High School Building Committee, Bill Mulligan will accept a presentation from his committee. Morning, Bill.
Morning, everybody.
How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Good, welcome.
Where would you like me to stand? Would you like to have the focus so they're not ping ponging, but whatever.
Microphone's here, that's the issue.
Yeah, can you switch that? Wouldn't it be easier? Or no?
It's gonna be easier on your necks.
No, that's all right.
That's for sure.
You'll find out that Mike really runs the meeting.
Yeah, that's clear, yes, that's clear. All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hopefully, this is the last time I see you. Well, for this purpose at least. In all seriousness, we're wrapping up this project. And about a few weeks ago, we met with the Board of Finance and gave them an update. And at your next regularly scheduled meeting today, we thought it'd be helpful to give you an update on where we stand with the budget for the project overall. It's been a long project, I think there's no question about it, but we're very, very pleased with the outcome here. First met a little over five years ago. It's been, as I said, a long project with a very good group of people. I'm very, very pleased, very proud of the committee, proud of the effort that they put in, proud at how we collaborated on some of the challenges that we faced for this project. But I'm also very proud that we never lost sight of the ultimate goal, which was to make sure that we had this project completed on time. We originally had scheduled a move-in for summer of 2015, and we actually moved in the summer of 2015. So we put a check in the focus of the on-time part of this, and the rest of this presentation we'll be talking about, the on-budget or under-budget part of this project. We always kept in mind safety being the highest priority despite a relatively aggressive schedule. You know, that was obviously foremost in everyone's minds, and I really want to congratulate Morganti, who provided the owner's representative services, but also Fusco ONG on the construction management for maintaining a truly safe working environment for both the contractors, subcontractors, but also for the students, faculty, and staff. Despite safety being the highest priority and the aggressive schedule, we wanted to make sure that we were minimizing impact on academics. Rick Masenti and Paul Freeman were fabulous in making sure that the schedules were properly coordinated against academics, that there was minimal disruption to testing or study time. You know, as I said before, I can't emphasize enough, the collaboration between all parties here was truly phenomenal. I think it was better than anyone could have expected. So the second part, I said, the on-time was the first part. The second part that we kept in focus here was the under-budget part. As everyone knows, we had a hard cap of $92.2 million. Yes, that was broken out into the emergency shelter funding, the energy efficiency funding, and then the actual project cost. I combined that here for purposes of simplicity, hard cap of $92.2 million. The projected final spend for the project will be at 90.4. You know, as you can imagine, when you go through these projects, there's risk management throughout the project. As you get farther along in the project, the risk reduces, no question about it, but it is going to be very difficult to come up with a number that is actually at $92.2 million. As a matter of fact, it would probably be poor project management if it came in at $92.2 million. The committee had always targeted a spend of $91.2 million, and as you can see, we came in a little bit shy of that, and I don't think anyone's going to necessarily complain about that, putting us in at $1.75 million under budget. Want to point out a couple things on these numbers here. Included in this estimate, I'm sorry, included in this projection for the final spend is the $800,000 in interim financing issuance and audit costs. This project doesn't truly wrap up until the state completes their audit, which could be truthfully years from now. It's going to take a while before that gets wrapped up. But we have included in this projected final spend number that you see here, the $800,000 in interim financing issuance and audit costs. It also doesn't include $649,000 in incentives that we received, primarily from the utility companies, and my understanding is the town used those receipts to reduce the final borrowing cost for the project, which I think was a wise use of money. You know, the last thing, and it's not going to be a bullet point on the slide here, I want to point out, also included in this project, doesn't affect the final cost at all, we were able to preserve the science wing and provide that to the community, right? Which was, you know, that's a significant, significant asset for the town that was preserved as part of this project. So we're very proud of that as well. To get into a quick overview of how the money was spent, the hard costs, what you would consider to be flowing through Fusco ONG, the construction costs for not only Fusco ONG themselves, but all of their subcontractors, right? That came out to $78.1 million, we project, by the end of this project. And then we had some soft costs, essentially what we would consider to be everything other than Fusco ONG's and their requirements, at $12.3 million. A lot of those went into a lot of the professional fees that we hired Taissu Kim Partners, who did a great job, and their engineers, their consulting engineers, theater consultants, electrical consultants, HVAC consultants, you know, the energy efficiency and sustainability consultants, things along those lines. Followed by the furniture fixture and equipment. I think we did very, very well in managing the requests from the Board of Education. I think, for the most part, we gave them everything that they were hoping for. We mentioned the interim financing before, $0.8 million in interim financing, and then there was a miscellaneous run of about a million dollars in other expenses for the project. In terms of the financing itself, you know, you'll note at the bottom of the slide, the date is as of 9:30. There will be one other update this quarter, and should be the final update for this quarter. Currently, the town has financed $56.7 million in long-term financing, additional $7 million in short-term financing. There may be, you know, some odds and ends that are required to be financed as we truly complete this project, but we're starting getting, we're getting order of reasonable magnitude numbers presented here. But again, this is everything that's currently presented to date. And if we take a look at the state's part of, the state's contribution to the process, you know, we've received almost $20 million to date already from the state. We expect that there's going to be a bit more, that we shall receive somewhere in the neighborhood of $4.5 million. And as I said before, we'll know the actual reimbursement once the audit is complete. You know, the state goes through and reviews all expenses, they cross out things that they deem ineligible, we try to, you know, talk them back and forth and determine why they think it is ineligible, correct any misperceptions they may have had. But we expect that somewhere around $24.5 million in reimbursement should be received from the state. And if we were to actually take that and look at that as a percentage, that'll be at 27 percent. The maximum possible the town could have received was 31.07 percent, okay? Actually, that number, my understanding, has gone down since this project has started, but you know, the maximum entitled, based on when we, we were entitled to, based on when we started the project, was 27 percent. We had always been targeting the upper 20s when making our decisions. There have been several costs that we knew outright would not be reimbursable, and we thought was a wise use of the town's money. One of those, I think everyone may be familiar with, is the synthetic turf with organic infill, right? That was not a reimbursable expense, but doing the cost-benefit analysis on that made it clear that it was, you know, it was a good use of the town's money. And there were many other decisions throughout this project that were like that, perhaps not to that magnitude, but like that in terms of the decision-making process. You know, in terms of the remaining work, I want to be clear, the project itself can only include work listed in the educational specification that was submitted back in 2011. There is only one item, I think, that we didn't include in the original educational specification. Everything else, you know, has been completed. So truthfully, based on the intent of the project, there's really nothing else that can be completed. That said, we have a few final pieces of work in progress. We are out to bid right now for some modifications to the exterior light fixtures to make them perhaps a little more community-friendly. The turf field should be wrapping up literally this week and should be put into use this fall, which will be great to see happen. And then there's some miscellaneous warranty work, some plantings and things along those lines. There's probably somewhere around a million dollars still to pay out the final bills for Fusco ONG, Ripman Lighting, you know, odds and ends that are going to come through. But for the most part, you know, most of the contracts have been wrapped up.
But you're including that number in the final number when you say you're working on something.
Correct. The numbers have been the projected final spend, okay? So this $950 is included in that projected final spend.
Does that include the turf field, too?
It does include the turf field as well, yeah. So still, a very healthy number under budget, including all costs that we project at this point to wrap up the project. We expect that we will dissolve the committee this winter at some point. I think the intent of the committee is that when the final invoice has been approved, we send a letter out to the Board of Education saying that the project is complete, we send a letter to the Board of Selectmen saying the project is complete, and then at the will of the Board of Selectmen, you know, we'll dissolve the committee. So that's the overview we have for you. Again, it's a very successful project, on time, under budget. I think the Board of Education is thrilled with the quality of the project, and we've already heard from the students and faculty that the educational experience is just phenomenal. So we thank the town and all the taxpayers for approving this project, and we hope that the town will enjoy it for decades to come.
Bill, we thank you.
Thank you.
And your committee, as we've said many times, and I'll continue to say it, it's an excellent job, people that put countless, countless hours into this project, and it shows. I think it's probably one of the best high schools in the state.
Thank you. It's been an honor.
Fantastic job.
It really has. But thank you. I will share that with the committee.
You know, it goes to what we've been saying all along, that Guilford has a phenomenal group of volunteers in this town, and this was all done with volunteer help.
Absolutely.
So thank you again.
Thank you.
It's a great, great job, and I think the Board can speak for itself, but I just want to say, I said that the ribbon-cutting, you owe large gratitude, gratitude to all the members of that committee. I don't know how many hours you guys have put in, I don't even want to count as many hours.
We don't either.
So we can return you back to your families pretty soon.
My wife may have been counting.
But this committee was appointed by this board, and I think Charles was on the selection committee, and Charles, he did a great job.
Well, they did.
Selecting the members of that committee to present to this board.
The way they worked together was, you should be very, very proud.
Yeah.
We are. I mean, it really was, it was inspiring, and it's what made the project successful.
Yeah.
Was that selection, the right balance of people.
And you brought it in on time. The kids are in there over a year now.
That's correct.
Right? And on the budget, which warms my heart.
Should warm everyone's heart, yes.
That's right. And I think the taxpayers have a lot to be proud of.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Actually, Bill, your wife called and said, can we find another committee? She's, she used to have meetings out once a week.
Do you have any more meetings then? You'll still meet a little bit till?
So we will have one meeting in November. I think it's two weeks from tomorrow, I believe. Then there will probably be one last just to, and the meeting in November will primarily be to award the lighting work, that exterior lighting work I referred to. There'll be probably one more wrap-up meeting, you know, final invoice, get some paperwork in line, you know, that type of thing. But we don't expect much beyond that.
Okay.
And then it's going to be the job of this committee to dissolve the building committee. Okay? Anybody else? Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill, could you give a copy of that tracing so that we can all get a copy?
Yeah.
So that when somebody asks me questions, from now, I'll have.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I'll have the information. Thank you.
Okay. Item five, Rick Mader, Park and Recreation Director, discuss and take possible action to accept grant for the dog park and authorize the first selectmen to sign all documents related to the grant. Do you want to say something?
No, no, just give me something.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning. I just want to mention first, we had our first-ever disc golf tournament at the Guilford Lakes Golf Course on Saturday. Very, very well received. We had over 70 participants, from little kids right up through some senior citizens, and I don't know what a good score in golf on that course is, but it was the same course as, same layout, but a little slightly different, but the winner was 23. Shot 23, is that, I mean, what's a good golf score there?
Well, par is 27, so 23 is pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, under par, yeah. There were some very, very qualified, very good people who, you know, did travel all over New England and participate in tournaments. We had some from New York and Massachusetts, but most of them were Guilford residents that participated. So it was a fun day, it was beautiful weather for it, and a new use of the golf course for a one-time event, at least.
What will the golf course net from that?
You know, I don't have the final numbers, but somewhere between $300 and $350, I think.
Which they probably would have never made on Saturday in November.
Right.
Okay, good, very good.
Yeah.
And it's still just walking around the golf course, as far as wear and tear and the greens and that kind of thing?
We stayed away from the greens, totally away from the greens. So the disc golf is like, it's a basket, it's like a chain, you know, chain basket, and the frisbee has to go into the basket, the same par as the golf course was, and same yardage.
So it's not a greens issue or wear and tear issue at all?
No, totally away from the greens. The guy who set it up, Ben Seibel, who, he works in Guilford, but he's from, lives in Stratford, I think, he's the one that does these things and set the whole thing up. He went out, laid it all out, and got the approval with the Golf Commission and Parks and Rec Commission, and he set it all up, did a really nice job.
Other than being a good thing for the golf course as far as, you know, revenue and that type of thing, does it have to be on a golf course, or is it just a terrain makes it work?
In fact, he said this, his, his, now, it's his first time in Connecticut, it's been on a golf course. There are other courses in other parts of the state that go through the woods. There's one up in Greenville, Mass. He said they have what they call a ball and chain event, where you play nine holes of golf, and then nine holes of throwing it to the chain, you know, the basket.
Sounds like marriage.
Stop that.
My wife doesn't watch this, I could say that.
Oh, boy, you really threw me off with that one, Joe. That's good. But it was a good event, I think well-received. Again, it was beautiful weather, and, you know, I don't think there's really any wear and tear on the course really at all, because it was people just walking, throwing frisbees pretty much.
Well, it's good to see that the golf course, whether it be the commissioner or whatever, is seeking additional revenues. You know, it just exposes it to more people in the community and gets more value, you know, it's a great thing.
And the course is beautiful, I mean, Ted does a nice job, it's just gorgeous, and people were commenting on that, too, how beautiful it was. So, you know, it was part of the intent, to get people to draw attention to the golf course. The event itself, it's a disc golf, but people may be in town who don't go there and use it. Now they've been on the course to see how nice it is, maybe you get people who want to sign up and go out there, too.
Yeah, I was out there about 2:00 when you were finishing up, and they used a separate area to tee off for the disc golf. The baskets were far away from the greens, and there was no disturbance of the course at all, so good job, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's get to the dog park.
The dog park, we went from disc golf to the dogs. Catherine Cairn is here, and she may want to chime in at some point, but the park is getting tremendous use. It's not unusual for there to be 30 dogs there with their people. And I know our park ranger said when he goes to lock up at night, it's dark, there's still people there using it. And he's gone at 6:30 in the morning to open up, and there are cars following right behind him waiting to go in. So it's getting tremendous use all times of the day. I've been there 2:00 in the afternoon, 1:00, and there are dogs there. But the evening and weekends, I think Catherine will tell you, are the busiest. So what the dog park committee has done is they're applying for a grant from, it's a granting agency called PetSafe, and they help fund different amenities for dog parks. And the intent that Catherine and her committee had was to build a paved, a walkway inside a dog park, so people may have a disability, can go in and use it, they can get it in a wheelchair, or if they have trouble walking on the mulch, they can walk around, you know, the inside of the park on the paved walkway. So they've applied for, it's actually been offered to be awarded a $10,000 grant, and the requirement is for Joe to sign it, approval from you folks to have him sign it, I guess. And that's the area that the grant be signed so that the dog park committee can go forward and get the area paved. Probably, I think, Catherine, more likely in the spring at this time, right? I don't think you're going to do it as well.
We need to raise another $5,000 on that.
So it's about a $15,000 project, so they're going to raise the other $5,000 to make it happen. They've raised, what, $40,000, $41,000 for the construction of the dog park?
$44,000.
$44,000, all volunteer effort, so there's no town dollars involved in here at all. That paid for the, well, volunteers removed, you know, the trees and shrubbery and brushes and vines and everything. We have tree companies who have donated the mulch, they're looking for places to jump wood chips anyway, especially now with all the work they're doing along the power lines in town. And so we've been telling these companies, go ahead, dump them there, and they have volunteers that spread them out. An Eagle Scout, Andrew Chapman, just built a kiosk there yesterday, Saturday, put a kiosk in, has the dog park sign, and a place for notices and stuff to go up. So it's all been volunteer effort, and they've done a great job, and now they're applying for this $10,000 grant to the paved walkway.
Well, there's no question, it is really a feel-good story about Guilford. I mean, it really has turned out to be remarkable and remarkable. Catherine, your committee and group of volunteers have to be commended. I mean, it has been an outstanding project, certainly they've run with it. I'll certainly move that authorize for selectmen to accept the grant and sign anything.
I'll second that, echoing Charlie's comments. And I think it's also great that you guys went out and got a grant, so, I mean, it's excellent. But I do know that there were some concerns, but it looks like they've been answered, Joe, from what I was reading, but I'm not sure if the town attorney has done anything.
Pam's nodding.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be mentioned that our in-house counsel did have some concerns. Rick, work with Pam, and I think they've been satisfied. Is that fair, say that? Yeah, okay. So, we don't have to name the park after PetSafe, is that correct? Okay, good.
They're going to have a sign, which is fine on the walkway, right?
That's okay.
Signage to say.
Put something on the fence on the walkway.
Yeah, that's really my only question. I echo everybody. Whenever I go by there, there's a bunch of cars and people, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, but just have one question about the signage, because I don't, didn't we talk about having a committee, or maybe Park and Rec was going to look into a signage policy?
Oh, yeah.
Is there any kind of precedent that we're setting to put signs up? That's the only thing I worry about. Having an outside party provide money, and then we have to put up a sign for that outside party?
So the signs are there now, they're like little plaques, like people who paid for the benches, there's like a little plaque on the bench saying, you know?
Yeah, well, that's no different from bricks at the library.
Sure, it's the same kind of thing. And I think the idea with the sign or whatever for the walkway, just, it'd probably be just like a little thing on the fence, maybe near, just saying, you know, "Walkway, built in part by grant from PetSafe." You know, it's not going to be a big billboard or sign, or something on the kiosk.
And it's not named, I just.
No, no. And they agree to, because that's one of the questions that Pam had, and I went back and talked to the representative from the granting company, and they said, no, they don't need to, they don't intend to have the dog park named after them.
Yeah, there's plaques on the sidewalks, on the green.
Yeah, and there's J and B, everything, yeah, I think that's fine.
Similar, similar. Okay, so it's that kind of thing. Is this a company or a nonprofit? You implied it was a.
Do you know, Catherine? Yeah, I was going to say, correct you. PetSafe, they actually make pet products. So they make electronic collars for dogs, and they have a whole bunch of things that they make, but they're a for-profit company.
For-profit, yeah. Motion's on the table and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to worry about setting a precedent, what you're putting people's.
No, this is no different than anything we've done elsewhere.
Sidewalks on the green, you have blacks all over.
Item six, Jim Portley, Town Engineer, six that one, considering possible action on the rental of a tub grinder, and leave disposal site. This is first item. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. This time of year, we grind the brush. The last couple of years, we've used the Durham Middlefield Grinder. We forged a relationship with them a couple of years ago, to both our benefits, and I would ask the Board of Selectmen to approve use of the grinder again this year at the same price as last.
I'll move that.
Second. Name second, any discussion?
My only question, Jim, remind us again how much new one of these costs?
You won't. Well, half a million dollars.
Right. Which is why we're not buying.
Right.
Will that be here?
Yeah.
Right, okay. I was wanting to get that number out.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll take this.
All right, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Six, that two, discuss and take possible action to approve a purchase of two covered structures for the salt and sand supply at Public Works. Go, Jim.
We had a recent visit by DEP, who went through the site, noted certain things that we have to spruce up. One of them was the historical use of our, these open bins that we have built out of large concrete block that we, when we have salt delivered, push the salt back, and then we cover the product with a tarp. On the DEP current regulations, we're supposed to have that under some kind of a roof structure. We looked around, rather than build a building per se, that we typically would have, something like this. These hoop buildings that get purchased, I have the catalog someplace along here. There it is. There's all kinds of models that you can pick from, but it's basically just a hoop structure. You see them in many places, you see them on Hoop 77, there's one up there, there's somebody's, got to be Christians, that has a, has like a farm stand, a big rope materials. These really would meet our needs. They've got the same fabric as, if you've ever been over to North Branford, they have that sports complex up and back, same kind of fabric. It's a very durable product. We can use, and we looked at this not only for soil storage, but we had in last year's budget, money to replace our soil spreader, I mean, our soil spreader, our sand spreader structure, it's a steel and wood beam structure, and we looked at alternatives on how to handle that. But we can build this because we're going to store them differently. We can get one of these buildings that would also cover our needs there and keep the spreaders out of the weather, again, extend their lives, provide a good protection for the spreaders. So I would request that the Board of Selectmen approve purchase of two of these fabric-covered structures. If we have a quote, I think I attached to the memo, it was for $28,647. If I bought them together, we would realize a savings of $5,356 in freight charges if we bought them separately. So in the discussion back and forth, they said, well, if you buy both, we'll include the freight. So that's sizable savings. Soil storage required, so I would recommend to Board of Selectmen they approve this purchase. We would charge it to the, to the road makers.
How are they with no?
They have anchors that you tie down to, you build these on top of concrete blocks, you want the core foundation. So we would have big concrete blocks and they have tie downs that go right underneath the blocks to prevent uplift or any additions you would have.
Jim, what's the useful life of this structure?
I would say about 15 years.
With the same covering?
Same fabric. And at that point, they would be feasible, but it's fabric. You know, they really, I don't even know if they have, they project the useful life up right through this. I had that question too. But, and these, another one in North Branford's been there at least 15 years. I remember bringing my grants over there that long ago to the batting cages they used to have in there.
What's the fabric made of?
It's a woven product. I really don't know. Let's see what it looks like. I'd have to go through this catalog, I don't know. It's heavier than just the plastic. It's a woven, woven product.
Yeah, it said it's a. We're not talking about a plastic.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's on the third. Let me try and look for it. Okay, thanks.
Our fabric structure features a 50-year warranty on the frame and 20-year warranty on the cover.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
And it probably has advantage if you change use or location or somewhat, it's mobile.
Yes.
I would move that we approve quote number eight, three, six, seven, four, three from Farm Tech in the amount of 28, 647. And I guess we're also approving sole, sole use, sole bid.
Right. Second. I did have one question. What are the size of these two?
They vary. Forty-two foot by seven, let's see.
I assume you're effectively just covering the area that the spreaders are in at this point, maybe a different place.
That one, I think our present structure is 100 feet long. One we would use for them would be, it'd be 34 feet wide by 60 foot long and it's 17 feet high.
And you have plenty of space. It's the same space.
Yeah, it's actually less depth, a little more width. The salt spreader, I mean, the salt storage would be 42 by 48, which is about what we have now. A little deeper, maybe.
So you'd put it in the same location?
Same location, yeah.
What's the lead time on this?
It would happen here within a couple of weeks.
All right, so you'd have it for the winter season?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to have it by December when the ED comes back.
Our guys would correct it.
Yeah, we would build it.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
If you want evidence of the ability of guys to put it together, take a ride up to North Guilford, see the box cover.
No, I know, we could do it.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Kovat, consider and take possible action on the William Ravis Plus Benefits Program for employees.
We have it.
We have it.
We have it.
We all have it. Who's the gentleman with me?
Good morning, good morning. With me today is Ryan Mauer from William Ravis Real Estate. I have Ryan speaking in a couple of seconds, but the reason we're here is Ryan and William Ravis have promoted an employee benefit. It's called the Housing Benefit Package, actually called the Home Plus Benefits Program for people either selling a home, buying a home, refinancing, or maybe even need homeowners' insurance. And anytime we've had any benefits offered to our employees, we've always gotten approval of the board of selectmen. We have a number of things we do offer to our employees. This is a new product, which I found to be very intriguing and exciting, and invited Ryan to come to the meeting today to speak to you about it. And you should have all received the package that was sent previously about it. So I'll just ask Ryan to just give a synopsis here. Thank you, guys, for having me today. You know, Bill and Candy Ravis came to me two years ago and they said that, you know, we're preparing to celebrate our 40th anniversary. We've had many successful years. We wanna focus on giving back to some of our local communities and we have an idea of creating a free employee benefit, which is, of course, the Home Plus Benefit Program. Their focus was not only to provide a free real estate benefit, but they wanted to focus on enhancing the organizations or townships recruiting and their retention. And they thought this would be a wonderful opportunity to do so. The Home Plus Benefit Program really offers four main benefits or resources. The first is, you'll see there's bullets in your package. The first is the mortgage incentive, which we provide each and every employee $500 in closing costs to offset some of their closing costs. The second and most intriguing piece is the cash back at closing. We offer $4 for every thousand of the final closing price. So, for example, I had a young couple who sold their condo the other day, it was just over $300,000. We were able to write them a check for $1,200 at the closing table, put it towards new landscaping, put it towards furniture. However, they went and purchased their first home. They purchased a ranch. It was just over $400,000. So we were actually able to provide them with the cash back benefit, an additional $1,600. So they were thrilled. There's a total of $3,000 just from the cash back benefit alone. The third piece is, is we have the ancillary services. We have about 15, 20 companies that provide home-related services, such as pods, moving companies. We just signed, for example, Superior Remodelers, who they offer $1,000 off if you're going to replace your roof. So we've got, we've got several companies that provide a home-related service at a significant discounted price. It has to be something that they've never provided the public in the past. And the last piece, which is where we've really received the most feedback, is we have a Home Plus Specialist who's going to be an advocate for your employees while they're selling or purchasing a home. Of course, they're going to be assigned a real estate agent, an agent that's very experienced within our offices. But this individual has 10 years of relocation experience, has been an agent themselves for 10-plus years. So it's nice to have somebody to fall back on. You know, you may be going through the negotiation process, although you have your agent there, it's kinda nice to call your Home Plus Specialist and see what they would be, what they would recommend. Could have inspection negotiations. It's nice for, to have that individual to fall back on. So the program is, it's continuing to become more and more robust as far as the ancillary services piece. I've got several companies that are wanting to join on to the program. Maytag contacted us the other day. They were made aware of the program. So they're going to be offering a discount. So we're gonna continue to focus on making that part of the program more robust. But we think it's a great opportunity for the employees of Guilford. In the event they're ready to buy or sell, why not have the substantial savings and, of course, the assistance to go through the process? Any questions?
Questions, comments?
So this is, this may be different from buyer or seller's own real estate agent? This is an additional agent involved?
Well, what we're doing is, when they're ready to buy or sell, they would simply get onto our website. They will, they will register. They will be contacted by their Home Plus Specialist within 24 hours, who will then assign them to a real estate agent, somebody that specializes in their region of interest. At that point in time, the Home Plus Specialist is just an advocate, somebody that, that will be sure that, for example, when they sign their contract, they're gonna follow up with the attorneys, you know, make sure that the inspections aren't done on time. It's just somebody to help them get through that process.
Gary's point, if they have their own agent with them.
Can't use this program. You have to use your agent.
You, it'd have to be a William, they can choose an agent that they wanna utilize, but it would be through William Ravis Real Estate.
Okay, so they can't have an agent's, they can't have their own real estate agent and have just simply the advice part? They have to have a Ravis agent?
They would have to, in order to receive the cash back bonus, yes. And the mortgage incentive, of course, yes, they would need to utilize a William Ravis agent.
To utilize any of the services, you have to have a Ravis agent.
That is correct.
So what if somebody lists their home with William Ravis? They've had it listed for six months. They leave the town as an employee and have moved elsewhere. And they're no longer employed by the town, but they still have, William Ravis has the agent, and they still get the benefit.
Of course. If they, if their home is listed and they began the process with us, yes, they're absolutely gonna still be eligible. The program's also eligible for family members. If you have an aunt, uncle, son, daughter who wanna utilize the program, they absolutely would receive the benefits as well. This is a nationwide program as well. So, you know, if you're focusing on a vacation home or you've got family in different locations, it would absolutely be available to them as well.
I struggle with this simply because it's almost as if the town's promoting a particular real estate company.
You know, when we, Norwalk and Bridgeport, Danbury, Newtown, they also utilize the program. And what we have done is, and it's a great point, Bill, Bill Ravis' focus was just giving back. And he said, let's, let's approach Sotheby's, let's approach Coldwell Bankers, Century 21. We've gone to all of them to say, would you like to do the same thing, offer a similar program? That'll give the employees some additional options. They haven't come forward yet. We expect that they will. But again, his focus is just on giving back and he thinks it's a great opportunity. Again, enhance your recruiting, your retention, and see.
So are we signing a contract with them or we just say it's part of the package? How's the town work, Mitch?
It's just, it's pretty much, I don't think there's a contract involved as much as just your approval. And then Ryan would provide me with packages. We'd promote it by letting employees know, by email.
Yeah, just another bank, like we do with Flack or some other stuff.
Yep, exactly. And Charles, to your point, we do have other discounts that are provided to our employees. We have a credit union. We have, you know, different, different cell phone companies, different insurances.
Home insurance.
I can see it as something out there. I just, you know, I get a little nervous when seeking out approval. You know, I don't want it to appear that we're necessarily recommending any one real estate company over another. I mean, you know, it's one thing to say, okay, these insurances are available, these credit unions are available.
Which is exactly what we do.
These real estate agents are available. That's my only concern.
It's a plus to be available to them, but it's not being endorsed by us. And if you do approve.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Either way, I just, you know, okay, these things are, it's like, you send out periodically, I guess you get tickets to some amusement park or something.
There's tickets.
I don't mind doing it in that way, but, you know, I'm concerned about endorsing a particular real estate agent over another.
But the problem is, we already do that. Like we have a university that we, that offers discounts to employees and we've invited that, we've done it with the credit union.
But we don't tell our employees.
They have to go to that university program.
We just let them know about it.
The same thing here. You know, they don't have to use a real estate agent.
Well, that's it. I mean, you're basically telling the employee that, you know, these things are available and if you want to use it, you get an extra coupon for something.
Don't we do with cell phone companies?
Excuse me?
Cell phone companies?
We have cell phone companies that step forward. Like I said, we've got a couple of different homeowner and car insurance companies that step forward, credit union. You know, and it hasn't been exclusive. We haven't said that nobody else can come in. I think Ryan realized that, 'cause we've talked about that, and he just mentioned it. If somebody else were to come in with a similar program, you know, we would, we would offer it. But he's the first to come in with anything like this for our employees based on a, you know, homeownership type thing. I found it intriguing and certainly trying to find ways of enhancing the benefits that we offer our employees. And if we have outside partnerships like this, I think it's a good thing.
What would you require from us, then?
Just, just a, just a vote of approval to say that you're allowing William Ravis to be entered as one of our benefit programs. That's all. That's offered, is offered to employees. Certainly isn't required by any stretch.
We have three options. We can say no, we can say yes, or the board would like to look into us a little further. We can bring it up at a subsequent meeting, so.
I express my concerns. I just.
Yeah, I don't have a problem having it be available as long as it's clear that this is not a recommendation by any of us that any of our employees should use this as opposed to whomever they might choose to use.
I mean, certainly, Gary, it's something that I felt was important to come to you only because I didn't wanna be seen as doing exactly your fear. You know, by just saying, Ryan, okay, and next thing you know, you hear about this and say, wait a minute, who approved this? Well, Mitch did. You know, I wanted, because it was a new type of program, as opposed to just adding a cell phone company or adding, you know, a university, actually, the university's a company and you have approved the agreements with them for their discounts. It doesn't mean we endorse any particular university. It just means I, when I give people their package options, they come to our, our benefits fair, it's, it's another option for our employees to know about and to give them an opportunity to, to say something. You know, a lot of people aren't gonna take advantage of this only because they're pretty settled. They're not moving either way. But if somebody is, it does give them an opportunity. But certainly, I'm not out there, I won't even mention the names right now, but when I, when I put out the information, I'm not saying you should do this or you should go to this bank or this credit union. You know, just let them know it's an option. So I see it in the same sort of vein.
The only other qualifier that I might suggest is that in your announcement of the availability of this, of this program, if it goes forward, that you make it clear that the program will only exist if they have a Ravis agent. I think that ought to be very clear in the beginning.
We do specify that, we do, and you'll see that.
Yeah, it's pretty much there, Charlie, but I know what you mean.
Do we, is there an agreement that we have to sign?
There's, there's no agreement. Bill made it very clear, he did not want any kind of commitment contractually. The only thing that we do is, we do create a, just a password that Guilford employees will utilize when they go onto our website, that we create. We get, we will obtain Mitch's approval, Mr. Kovat's approval, in order to create that.
The reason, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, you know, the reason I suggest that you have that spelled out is my understanding in the real estate, the legalities of the real estate business, is the minute you speak to an agent, that agent has rights. It's just my understanding and I'm not clear on the legalities of it.
I'm not sure.
My understanding, if somebody were to open this up and say, okay, I'm interested, they have to speak to a Ravis agent, you said, to promote it. And my understanding, at that point in time, the Ravis agent has rights.
I don't think that's exclusive.
No, you have to sign a contract, Charlie.
Exclusive rights, you assign a contract. No, you can. You assign buyer, buyer representation. You can, you can interview agents from different, different agencies, having been in that field for a short time. You know, you can interview as many agents as you want, you know, different firms, but certainly, when you make that, you're right, once you make that commitment and sign a contract.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want an employee to.
No, not, but not talking to them, you have to actually sign them.
Go down the pike, you know, with this program and taking advantage of some of the other things, and all of a sudden find out that they have a surprise.
That's why I always, I always tell family and friends, if you're gonna go out with an agent, look at homes, you sign that contract just for that day, just in case it does not work. So, and so then you are free from any contractual.
So the town is not signing.
No, in fact.
Not committing to.
But, but by giving your authorization for me to use this as one of our benefits for employees, certainly you have the exact opposite authorization, authorization. If you feel that for any reason this isn't working out, you, you guys vote and say, we don't wanna continue this program anymore, we pull the plug. It's as simple as that. That is correct.
But I think it has to.
There's no agreement with any timeframe or anything like that.
But if you, Mitch, when this came up with the insurance, as I raised that same concern, like we're not promoting a specific, 'cause we had disability. But basically, it's inviting anybody that wants to come to the table potentially to say, okay, you wanna offer the employees a discount, you can get on the list. But by no means are we endorsing them. So I think that has to be made clear to the employees that we're by no means endorsing these programs.
Not a problem.
Or these vendors or whatever you wanna say.
So any other Realtor can come in and.
Right, and allow the same program.
Or some of the program. That's fine.
Will you be at, or one of your people be at the employee benefit luncheons?
Oh, absolutely. Probably, Ryan and I spoke last, the fair is in June. We hold it June, and Ryan has already assured me that William Ravis will be there to answer any questions at that time at the benefits fair in June. We love the fair, we'll.
I would just suggest that if we approve it, that we ask Mitch to send out a letter to each and every real estate agency operating in town saying that we have approved this and everybody else is encouraged to come up with an equal.
You gotta put me on the spot to find every real estate agent in town and make sure I don't miss it.
A lot of individual.
The world will get out. They would get to the agencies and just say, you know, Ravis has offered this, if you wanna do it, let us know.
I don't, yeah, my first reaction to that is not to be in the forefront of that, I mean, we do have it. I just think that might create additional problems, although I understand why you said.
And if you miss one, you could.
The whole thing, it, it then creates this dialogue and.
Yeah, we're seeking them and all that, yeah, I understand your point, but I.
They'll, they'll come forward if they're interested, I'm sure.
I think you have to look at it just like you did with some of the insurance company discounts that we've offered, is, is that there's employee, or the universities where there's employee-based discounts at different organizations, and that's really what it, what it's all about, so.
Look, I don't, I don't have a problem if the employees can get a discount. And we're not committing to town. I was gonna move that, uh, the Board of Selectmen authorized the offering of, uh, the William Ravis program, uh, to our employees.
I'll second it. Ryan, I have one question, how do you, um, determine the additional companies that you recommend your company to? Like pod companies, how do you?
Just a matter of, you know, Mr., Mr. Ravis makes that determination on who he wants to offer the program. Right now, his focus is the townships as well as the public school districts, in order to give back to our teachers and supporting staff members as well.
This would also apply to the employees of the Board of Ed too, 'cause they're, they're part of the town.
They, they are, but I have not, you know, my, the programs that I send out strictly go to our town employees, not the Board of Ed. I think, uh, Ryan would approach the Board of Ed separately, 'cause they sometimes, there's certain, there's certain things that they prefer to go through the Board of Ed approval, and I don't wanna step on those toes either. So I'm sure, I'm sure Ryan and, and William Ravis would like to make it available to the Board of Ed, but that approval would go through the Board of Ed.
Okay, that's fine. Do we have a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sting.
One abstention, affirmative, one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day, everyone.
Mitch, you want an extra package?
Uh, discuss and take, number eight, discuss and take possible action to authorize the first electman to award bid nine dash one six one seven. Deal number two, heating oil and unleaded gasoline after bids are received at ten o'clock AM on November seventh, twenty sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
We need to vote.
We haven't voted yet.
We do this every year.
Yeah, I agree with Paul with you.
Aye.
Aye.
You voting?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thanks, Pam.
I'm sorry you have anything to say. Okay, item nine, appointments and resignations. We've got a bunch of them today, which is good. On the appointments. Act on a recommendation to appoint Allison Varian to the Norena Commission, return to begin December first, twenty sixteen, and expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Kenneth Wilson to the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire October sixteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Act on a recommendation to move Micah Manziel from alternate to a regular member on the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Act on a recommendation to appoint Chris Andrew Hagan to the Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire October fifteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Act on, uh, recommendation to move Christine Prevention from an alternate to a regular member on the Guilford Lake Golf Course Commission for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Which is the ones you want on the table? Okay, all right, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a recommendation to move Jim Meredith from an alternate to a regular member on the Guilford Lake Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Robert Cusio to the Economic Development Commission for a new term to begin December first, twenty sixteen, and expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next two, uh, recommendations, uh, I'd like to table, it's, uh, appointment of Robert Cusio as an alternate to the Golf Course Commission, and nine dot nine, a recommendation to appoint, uh, Patrick Pascal as an alternate to the Guilford Lake Golf Course Commission. Uh, the reason I'd like to table these is there seems to be a, uh, a, uh, inquiry by the, uh, subcommittee chairman of the Republican Town Committee, uh, at his request. I'd like to, uh, table this, if the board would so please.
So moved, table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Trace, did you get that? Act on a recommendation to appoint Steve Renshie as an alternate to the Youth and Family Service Board to fill a ver- vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a recommendation rece- received, a resignation received from George Page from the Guilford Lake Golf Course Commission.
So moved.
Wait, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Act on a resignation received from Michael Pratt from the Guilford Lake Golf Course Commission.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now we have requests for the use of town property.
I would make a motion that we approve the three sign requests and the one use from the Guilford Arts Center as, uh, printed in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, uh, before we approve it, let's see.
And the, the Guilford Arts Center has a special permission to increase the time for setup and removal.
Uh, okay, that's fine.
Is that what you were gonna mention?
Yeah, also, there was a, originally, uh, they had asked to, uh, waive the restriction on alcohol, but we took that off, Trace? Okay, 'cause the police chief, uh, wanted to have more time to address the board on that. Okay. Our motions are made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Uh, eleven, correspondence, we had the building officials want the report. And eleven two, public works monthly report. Any comments, questions? Committee reports, do we have any? I don't think we had any active committees last month. Okay, uh, all business, we have any? Uh, I just wanna bring up, uh, one comment on the public hearing we had, God, hopefully, um, we had last Tuesday. I think it was a very spirited and well-attended public hearing, uh, on the Greenway Trail proposal. Um, I don't know about you folks, I'm not ready to vote on it at this point. That's why I didn't put it on the agenda, we haven't talked about it. We heard from, Tracy did a count, fifty-seven, uh, citizens, it's a lot to digest. We've gotten hundreds of letters or emails, right, Carl?
Yeah.
So it's a lot to go over, so I think it's too soon. One thing I would like to propose, and you folks can chime in, i- is that, uh, we should probably have a workshop amongst the board, and let's, let's discuss it and go over this.
Yeah, there were enough new ideas that night that maybe we could invite some people after we, you know, digest a little more.
So, um, I know Gary and I wanna get together tomorrow, perhaps, Gary? And, uh, there were a lot of good ideas that I heard, that I think we should, uh.
And maybe Mr. Portley can, uh, develop some alternatives and options at least.
Yeah, Jim's not here now, so let's talk about him. We, uh, Jim and I have, have talked about, uh, alternatives and that perhaps would be, uh, more acceptable to a
Greater number.
Larger majority of the citizens of Guilford. Certainly, we heard a lot of, uh, opposition, and, uh, I'm not ready to go ahead with this right now, at this point, so, uh.
I think it's.
Tracy will, uh, poll the members on when would be a good time for us to have a workshop, and a workshop is nothing, a, a meeting where we don't vote, we just discuss. And, uh, I wanna get everybody's ideas on where we go from here.
I, no, I, I agree.
And it's no rush, as far as I'm concerned. I think the last speaker at this, uh, at our public hearing, I think gave us, out of all the advice we heard, and all the, the controversy, the last speaker, uh, Dr. Lee, gave me the best advice, take your time, and I think that's what we should do.
No, I agree with you, Joe, and I think the thing for me that was, in addition to everybody's comments, I valued, but that there were some a number of property owners that either spoke directly or indirectly through correspondence that was provided to us that have additional concerns that weren't presented to them, that, that's, you know, they, they just, they're concerned about what was originally presented to what it's gonna look like now, there's some misunderstandings. And not, to not value everybody, that's gonna be impacted, but most specifically, because of that, that was even more heightened concern to me, that I think we should do exactly what you're doing, so I think that's a great idea to do a workshop.
All of that being said, I think conceptually, the project makes a lot of sense, uh, and it's worth some extra effort to find something that'll work for everybody.
I agree with you, Charlie, too. I, absolutely.
I mean, um, honestly, if we can get a, a walkable path or sidewalk from the town line to the town green.
Yeah.
I think would be acceptable.
Connect a couple of neighborhoods and that type of thing. You'll find a way to make it work.
Uh, so, yeah, that's what I have to say on that. Tracy will poll the board and see when is a good time. I, I know, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna be out for a while, so I wanna make sure that everybody's available.
Charlie, what, what's your date?
Friday.
Friday.
How long have you anticipated?
Five days in the hospital.
Yeah.
We'll send you getting well cards.
We'll have it in your hospital, we'll have it in your room.
That's a good time to have it. Okay, any, anything else, anybody, any old business? Any new business? Public forum on, uh, three minutes on any item? Good morning, Mark, how you doing?
As a service to the town, when the meeting's over, I'll change the time of the clock.
Good morning, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Mark Wasserman, I'm currently the Chair of the Economic Development Commission here in town.
Good morning, Mark, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. Uh, I appreciate you taking a couple of minutes for me today, I will be as quick as possible. Um, for a number of years now, we've actually been trying to get, um, two seventy-three forty-seven outdoor displays modified and, uh, have, uh, the merchants of Guilford be able to have a display outside of their store, uh, front, much like that is done in our surrounding towns, Madison, Branford, uh, North Branford, uh, as well as many other towns in Connecticut. And actually, in our research, we have not been able to find any town in Connecticut which restricts the use of outdoor displays the way that Guilford does. It's almost like this regulation is written backwards. Uh, instead of telling the merchants what they can do, we're telling them, um, what they can't do. Um, so, we're, we're kinda that. Um, I have already met with Joe on this, uh, a few weeks ago, and we've already had our first public hearing at Planning and Zoning last Wednesday, our next public hearing is on the fourteenth. And that would be the night that, um, they plan on voting for it. What I'm here for today is to get your support for this, formal support that we can go to planning and zoning with. As you can see, there's a letter from, uh, Ian at the Showland Chamber of Commerce, I went to their Board of Directors meeting, uh, met with them, they unanimously, um, voted to support this. Um, and just for a quick history's sake, uh, the, um, Chamber of Commerce has never come out in support, let alone unanimous support for any regulation in any town before, so we're kinda making a little history with them. It's history. A, a very quick background, this started in two thousand thirteen, when one of the merchants here in our town came to economic development asking for this, and we were approved in, uh, two thousand fifteen. Uh, we had a amendment that was similar to this, um, that allowed the use of outdoor displays on a very restricted basis. They were allowed to do it the first full weekend of the month, rain or shine. If it rained, sorry, um, uh, they weren't allowed to go any further. So this revision is a culmination of what was written by, um, George Carl, uh, O'Krell, sorry, uh, Reggie Reed, the zoning, uh, committee, as well as EDC. So a lot of effort has gone into this. We do have a lot of support, uh, from many different people on planning and zoning. Uh, but we wanna get this taken care of.
In order to vote on this, we'd have to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, though, wouldn't we?
Yep, yep. Which would be a week after I tried. I was like, it was actually my fault, because, um, I thought your meeting was next Monday, not this Monday.
Well, you're right, as far as formally voting on it, but we could voice support individually.
A letter would be great, if you guys showed up at the meeting, that would be awesome.
The meeting's one, the Wednesday night?
Wednesday night planning and zoning meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, this is really, it's, it's kinda different, I know you guys can't go and support individual petitions at planning and zoning, but this is something that is, it's not a petition as much as it is a regulation change, and it is affecting all of the merchants of Guilford as a whole.
Obviously, I won't be available to attend that meeting, but if any of my fellow members will attend, I, uh, I in person support this. I mean, I, we, I've looked at this back the years when we were on, uh, planning zoning, Cindy and I, I know it's come up many, many times, and, you know, they've got some pretty good controls in here, and, uh, whatever opportunity any of us have to support this, I, uh, would add my name to it.
I've got no problem with it at all, I just, um, I mean, the rules are the rules, and we can't, we can't vote on it if it's not on the agenda, but, um, I think it's a long overdue.
But we, would we be voting per se, Joe? I mean, it's not, so we could sit here and say, like, on the record, we, I could say, I support it, you support it.
Somebody at the meeting, there's no reason why at the meeting, you could say that we couldn't, you know, because of timing and, and whatever, we couldn't, but we, you can use my name in support of it, if that makes.
You can use my name, I'm gonna send a letter anyway, so.
But if, is planning and zoning gonna vote on it?
Yes.
Hopefully, unless they.
They can't vote on it unless we recommend it to them, right?
No, no, we've already made.
After, after they go change a regulation, it might have to come back, but not before.
What's the procedure?
Once the regulation is changed by planning and zoning, it goes into effect either, uh, I believe it's immediately unless they set a date in the future. There's no further action required.
This is to the zoning code, it's not a.
It's the zoning code, it's not, we don't.
We, we don't have, no jurisdiction on zoning codes.
That is correct.
We don't vote on it, so we could say we, if, if it's a consensus here, we could say we support it.
The zoning code thing, not a legal, uh, but it's legal, but.
Let me check with counsel if I can write a letter in support of it, and then I could circulate it. If you wanna sign it, you can all sign it, if not.
Sign my name, boy.
Sign my name.
What, I, I just have two questions.
I'll get it out today, if I can sign it.
Under thirteen appeals go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it just says to the commission, I assume that means the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Appeals from decisions by the zoning enforcement or officer may be taken to the commission.
So what we're saying is.
That's the, that, you're just talking about planning and zoning.
Yes.
That's all I wanna clarify, and I'm a little bit concerned with natural aesthetics of the zone, because that's very individualized.
It's very vague. Absolutely, and that was done by design to give Reggie the ability to say, okay, you're on Route One, this is kind of in, in, in line with what other businesses on Route One do, um, you're on the historic green, and we wanna keep in line with that. So it's kinda, to give Reggie that flexibility. This actually simplifies Reggie's job immensely, because now she doesn't have to go around saying, you gotta take that in, you gotta take that in, you can't do that type of display, she can now go around and say, it's beautiful, I love it, can you tweak that? Something like that. It also gives her the, uh, ability to say, that's not safe.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'll do, and then.
Good.
Okay.
Mark, I applaud you for making this.
You don't wanna sign it.
So making it happen.
And individuals' choice of aesthetics.
Steve cops in the beginning, I've kinda taken over.
No, it's good.
All right, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board?
Move adjourned.
No, okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks, folks.
Joe, I would make one comment.